Would you please stand? Our invocation is by Reverend Arnie Clare of New Creation Fellowship. Is the Reverend here? That is not him. I'm gonna go to my bullpen, Mr. Oliver Davis. Would you please give us our invocation?
Good Lord, we thank you so much for being here tonight. So we ask for your wisdom, we ask for your guidance as we make decisions for the city of South Bend. We ask you to bless our mayor, bless each member of the city council, bless all those who are in attendance tonight, and may we all work together to make this a stronger city. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Join in the pledge.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America. We worship God with the same. One nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. If you would, please turn your cell phones to silent.
Ms. Kaufman, roll call.
Councilmember Preston. It's Councilmember McBride.
Present.
Councilmember Roden.
I'm here.
Councilmember Teshka.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Gordy.
Here.
Councilmember Furlough.
Here.
Vice President White.
Present.
President Scott.
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you. To report on subcommittee amendments, please.
To the Common Council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has respected the minutes of the May 28th, 2019 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Much in your favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Kaufman, would you please read Special Business Bill Resolution 1939, please?
1939, a resolution of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana honoring the life of the great man Robert L. Miller Sr.
Thank you, is there a presenter?
There is. Jake Teschka, 2419 Chestsires Drive, here in South Bend. And before we get underway, I'd just like to thank members from Miller's Vets for being here tonight to honor Judge Miller's life and also Judge Miller's son, Bob Junior, and granddaughter Amanda for being here as well. Judge Miller was always somebody that I looked up to and his impact on the community was, I think, too great to even capture in one resolution, as I think our attorney Bob can attest, his service to our country in World War II in the Navy, his service to our community, the list of things that his hands were in here locally goes on and on and on. And I consider myself blessed to have known him in his later years and for the wisdom that I gained from speaking with him, usually on a monthly occasion, and that's why I wanted to bring this resolution to you tonight. So without further ado, I will read this.
Thank you.
Resolution of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana honoring the life of the great man Robert L. Miller Sr. Whereas Robert L. Miller Sr., born December 5th, 1920, in Wilkinson, Indiana, the son of James and Emma Miller, is by definition a member of what we now recognize as the Greatest Generation. And whereas Judge Miller is a member of the Greatest, as a member of the Greatest Generation, not only by reason of the date of his birth, but also by the reason of enlisting in the United States Navy during World War II and serving five major campaign battles in the South Pacific during which time Judge Miller received more than a dozen medals, including a Purple Heart. And whereas Judge Miller's military service continued when he was recalled to active duty during the Korean War. And whereas Judge Miller returned to South Bend and raised his family, which grew to five children, 12 grandchildren, seven great-grandchildren, and includes, and including Judge Miller being a great guardian of one. And whereas Judge Miller's contribution to our community took so many forms that any attempt to even mention all of them would undoubtedly fail due to sheer numbers. And whereas this resolution is being presented shortly after Memorial Day 2019 and the 75th anniversary of the invasion of Normandy, AKA D-Day. So it is fitting to focus on one of Judge Miller's primary loves, military veterans. And Judge Miller's devotion to military veterans, like his other contributions to our community, took many forms, but two projects in particular are evidence of Judge Miller's greatness, Miller's Vets and the Half Staff for Veterans Program. And whereas Miller's Vets is a drill team of uniformed veterans from the South Bend Center for the Homeless who provide advanced skills and close-order drill participation and color guard performance, including the last salute, a full military funeral with all military honors for veterans who have no family, church, or veteran organization to assist with funeral plans. And whereas Half Staff for Veterans is a program resulting from a proclamation from Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, which enabled Judge Miller's vision to fly the American flag at Half Staff for all deceased veterans in St. Joseph County on Patriot Day, Veterans' Day, and Memorial Day of each year. And whereas Judge Miller is now one of the deceased veterans for which the flag flies at Half Staff on those days. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the South Bend Common Council as follows. Section 1, Judge Miller's words that our military vets deserve the very best shall continue to guide us in action toward all who have served in the military. Section 2, Judge Miller is unquestionably one of the greatest of the Greatest Generation and will be missed by all. Section 3, Godspeed.
Godspeed.
Section 4, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage by the South Bend Common Council and approval by the mayor.
Awesome, thank you. I don't know how to follow that.
That's right.
Is there anything this council would like to add? One half of you doesn't speak. Jake, anybody else?
Well, I'd like to invite if any of those here in attendance from Miller's Vets or if anybody from the family would like to say a few words, you're more than welcome at this time to do so.
Come on up.
My name's Ed Burris.
Sir? Sir, come on up.
Yeah, if you could approach the podium and the microphone, that way we catch every word for the public record.
All right. Name it, Ed, sir. My name's Ed Burris, I'm the commanding officer of the Miller's Vets Color Guard. And I don't know what else I can add from what Jake has said, but just a few weeks ago, we did the Half Staff salute on Memorial Day, which was one of Judge Miller's greatest achievements. He always pushed for that. And here is the fruit of his labors, right here. I've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 members of the color guard present, 3 aren't here tonight because one's having surgery tomorrow, one's working, and one's not feeling well. But from what started out as doing honors for deceased veterans over the past 8, 9 years, has gone to average of 100 gigs a year, parades, color guard presentations, just a various amount of different things we do. We've got a busy summer coming up, and it's a good thing, it's a good thing to do. When Judge Miller asked me to do the Miller's Vets, I expected it to be a one- or two-day deal, and it ended up six years. And I can honestly say, even though I did complain sometimes, I loved every minute of it. It's great, he was a great man to be with, a great man to work with, and very, very much, he's gonna be missed very, very much by everybody that knew him, knows him. And like I said, the last ceremony we did, we did in honor of Judge Miller, which was on Memorial Day.
Can we introduce the guys to everybody? Please do. Please do.
Why don't I start?
Time to come up. Please stand.
Randy Lester, stand up, Randy. Kelly Rodelaw, Steve Pietrock of Peter's Act, Mark Harbaugh, Don Weiss, what have we got there? Jerry Smead, Blaine Hagedorn, and Mark Sawyer. Robert Cornish is our photographer, we took him on. He's not a veteran, but he works just as hard, or maybe harder than some of these guys, but good man. The gentlemen that are missing are Thomas Far, I feel like I'm...
Ken Donley.
Ken Donley, and Jody Robey.
Ken Donley.
And Nick Yan, I'm sorry, another fellow, poor guy's missing, he's working also. So, great bunch of guys, big guys. And I'd like to introduce Kent Lotteman. He, all right.
You know, one thing that I didn't hear in the resolution is that Robert Miller Sr. was also instrumental in starting the Robert Miller Veteran Center for Homeless Veterans. And I had the opportunity to be the director for six years, I'm now retired, it still goes on. It's a 24-vet facility, and for the first five years, all 24 vets were filled, and we actually had a waiting list. The last time I checked, the admission was 340 admissions to the Robert Miller Veteran Center. And that's running about 74, 76 percent. That's temporary housing, couldn't stay there more than 24 months at the most, but it's temporary housing, and we were successful in getting at least 76 percent into permanent housing when they left there, as well as half-time work, full-time work, and so forth. A couple of these individuals here had the opportunity to stay there. So that's an additional part of the resolution. Robert was creative, more creative than Ed and I could handle, that's all I can say. His mind was great, he came up with more activities and events than we could possibly handle. But it was great, I mean, to see his sharp mind was just something to behold, because he kept coming up with idea after idea after idea. So we thank him for that.
Thank you. Sir, if you would, state your name and address for the record.
Kent Lotteman, 1845 Champlain Drive, Miles, Michigan.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak in favor?
I'm Bob Miller Jr., 204 South Main Street, Robert A. Grant Federal Building, and I just want to add one thing, which is how much he loved the city. He lived here for 80 years, once he got here, he never moved. He started, he came up from Indianapolis to play football at Notre Dame, and from the first person he met, who happened to be the Methodist preacher, because his mother was a little concerned about his attending this university at Notre Dame, different age, but from the first person he met until the last person he saw, he loves South Bend. And he has other things that need to be mentioned, but that should as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Aladeen DeRose, I'm an attorney in South Bend, and I reside at 1421 East Washington Street. I'm also a friend of the Miller family. And I've attended three memorial services for Judge Miller. And in that, in all of these services, I've learned something that I didn't know about him, each more astounding than the other. But what you all don't know probably is that he was an inventor, that he worked hard, that for the last 10 years of his life, between ages 88 and 98, he's probably accomplished more in his legal career than any of us who practice 40 years already. He is, he was a remarkable man, and a family man, devoted to his children, to the community, to the practice of law. He was a judge, is a Renaissance man, and an inventor. He invented at least two products for those, when he saw a need, he met the need personally, if no one else did. He was just remarkable, and it was my privilege and pleasure to know him.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Anyone else? Anyone dare to speak against this resolution? It is a democracy. Thank you. I'm gonna turn back to council for comments, we'll start with Ms. McBride.
Thank you, Councilwoman Teschka, for bringing the resolution, and to the family, thank you for being here. What an honor for us to have the resolution be passed today. So congratulations to the family and to the vets, thanks for coming and sharing this day with us. His legacy will continue to live on in South Bend. I remember going and taking a tour of the homeless clinic for the vets, and what a great partnership that, and a building that he started. And I would love to see and know that everything that he had left behind will continue to move forward through his family and through the community. So I honor him today, and just glad that you brought this before us today. Thank you.
Ms. Brooks?
Thank you, Councilwoman Teschka, excellent resolution, happy to support it, and just, you've tucked in so many nice thoughts and sentiments, and truly is an honor to his service and also your testimony to how he impacted your life directly. And anytime Aladeen DeRose comes up and gives that type of resounding support, we know as an entire community that we can all get behind this. I want to thank the service members that are here today and those who also support the very important work of the Miller Vets, that thank you for your past service, for your current service, and your future service. We appreciate it on behalf of the city.
Dr. Davis?
It's truly an honor to be voting for this resolution. I'd like to thank all the Miller Vets, the family, glad that you're here. When I hear of somebody who's got the Purple Star, you know, Bronze Star, all those kind of things, it's just been amazing, tis bravery. And the word I look at is the word influence. His influence lives forever, and will live forever. Power can fade, people can vote you out, people move forward, influence never fades. Influence, in fact, over time, it even gets stronger. And it gets stronger as we look at his life, as we look from his legacy and everything he's done for all his life, and what would be continued through his son and what has been continued through the grandchildren. And each one of you and all of us are a part of him. And so it's been a blessing and an honor to see his work, to be a part of that, and to teach us to leave our cities better than where we first came. And I think that's what he's done in all of our lives, so it's truly an honor, I'm glad you brought this resolution to us, and I look forward to supporting it.
Jake, and veterans, and family members, it's a privilege to just consider a resolution like this. If you didn't know him, you know now just by what you've heard tonight, that he truly was a remarkable man, and I'm honored to just be a part of a resolution. Thank you.
You know, I feel just honored to be a part of this resolution, really incredible man. Thank you.
I would like to thank Councilwoman Jake for bringing this resolution before the council. Indeed, it's an honor to support such a resolution in behalf and on behalf of an outstanding person. Not only was he a judge, but he was so committed to the city of South Bend, and to the vets that you have given your time, and you're committed to this country. I personally thank you for your work, and also it's just an honor to really call you Judge Miller's Vets. You know, that is a legacy that will continue to live on and on. And to the family members, we thank you for sharing your dad with us. He was a great man, and his life and his legacy will continue way beyond the times that we will have on this earth. So again, thank you so much.
Finally, thank you, Jake, for, Councilwoman Teschka, for bringing this, and I am truly honored as well. And I want to thank the family for being here and in his service, and you guys in the front row, that legacy lives on, and as you pass that down, I'll remember Judge Miller from you guys. So thank you for all you do too. So. Mr. Teschka, anything else?
I think I kinda went out of order there and didn't much feel in the beginning, but as you heard, yeah, again, this list could not be comprehensive just because of the life that Judge Miller lived, and as Aladeen pointed out, even in, even in the last decade of his life, he continued pushing forward and accomplishing new things and achieving more and doing more. And I would say that the, you know, his legacy lives on, not only in his vets, but in his family and in the legacy of service that they're carrying out as well. And so thank you for your support and look forward to passing this tonight.
Motion to adopt, back with a second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Let's invite them to come forth. I'd like for the vets, the family, come on up. And Aladeen. Come on up. You're gonna have the whole crowd. Come on up. That's nice. It's truly an honor.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
God bless you. I know, yes indeed, I was like, wow. You train me well.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I got to see you. All right, see you then. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Blessings to you.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Blessings to you, thank you.
The biggest, strongest handshake I've had here at the Council ever. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Take a picture with Jake, take a picture with him. He did the resolution, come on, take a picture. I know, go on down there for the picture.
Thank you.
They know the drill. Come on up, guys. Come up on the row. Yep, you're good. Every council meeting, we get a picture with Jake. Can't throw in the bottom, this one. You're too big. Go back to our regular scheduled program. At this time, there are no reports from city offices. Jamie Morgan's in the audience, representing the mayor's office. Thank you, Jane. At this time, there is no committee of the whole, and there are no bills for third reading will move straight to resolutions. Ms. Kaufman, would you please read 1940?
1940, a resolution of the Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana approving the issuance of scrap metal junk dealer recycling operation licenses for calendar year 2019 pursuant to section 451 of the South Bend Municipal Code.
Thank you, is there a committee report?
Yes, Health and Public Safety met today and gave us a favorable recommendation.
Is there a presenter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Graham Sparks, I'm with the City Clerk's Office, offices on the fourth floor of the county city building.
Sir, is today your birthday?
No.
It's yesterday. Happy birthday.
Close, thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The property in question today is located at 3109 South Gertrude, pursuant to the South Bend Municipal Code. It is under the jurisdiction of the Ordinance Violations Bureau to annually process the scrap metal and junk dealers licenses. We had a resolution approving the majority of these a few meetings ago. We had one remaining one that took some time. This is a new owner of a property that has had a longstanding license formally, under the name of Steve and Jean's Auto. The property is in the 6th Common Council District, just south of Rum Village Park. The property does not have any outstanding issues or former violations. The delays, the delay in approving this license was a complication with the transfer of ownership from Steve and Jean's to now what's called first choice towing. The property has passed fire, police, and code inspections. Fire has inspected the building, and it should not be used as office space as it is currently configured. The applicant intends on raising the structure. If you have any questions, I'd refer to my colleagues and/or the committee meeting minutes that I will be completing later. I am on my side.
Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Graham? Come on, one, it's his birthday. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
At this time, we'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of 1940, please come to the podium. Seeing anyone wishing to speak against 1940, please come to the podium. Back to council.
I make a motion that 1940, the resolution be adopted.
Second, Ms. Kaufman.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Roden.
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordy.
Aye.
Councilmember Furlough.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Would you please read 1941, Ms. Kaufman?
1941, a resolution of the Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana amending resolution number 471083, including a document extending and amending the 2017 Human Rights Interlocal Agreement with the county of St. Joseph.
Thank you, is there a committee report?
There is. Good afternoon.
Hang on, Ms. Aladeen DeRose.
The Health and Public Safety Committee met and gave this a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Rose, since it is not your birthday, you can go ahead and start.
Thank you, Council President Scott, members of the council. I'm Aladeen DeRose, with offices on the 12th floor of this building. I'm here to request that the council approve this resolution, which concerns the interlocal agreement between the South Bend Human Rights Commission and the county of St. Joseph to enforce the county's human rights law. That law was passed in 2017, and it's substantially equivalent to that of the city. At the time that the county council passed its ordinance, it did not have an enforcement body. And so about nine months later, in September, the county and the city entered an agreement by which the city enforces the county's human rights ordinance. That was later then continued through 2018 under resolution 471018, but omitted from that resolution was a document that allows the continuance of the interlocal agreement indefinitely from year to year based upon county council's appropriation of funds for the city's services provided in the interlocal agreement. So at this time, at the time that we were before the council in 2018 in April, the county hadn't begun its 2019 budget process. It did do that, it appropriated the funds, and under the exhibit that's being attached, Exhibit A1, the city can continue its services to the county and on an indefinite basis as long as there's an agreement regarding funding.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rose?
Question for you.
Davis?
I'm sorry, I wasn't brought up this afternoon part of it. In terms of the county fees for this, will there be the need, well, in the need in the future to raise the fees or whatever, how would that go about being handled?
That's an annual process, and that was the purpose of Exhibit A1, is for the county and the city to sit down and discuss the numbers, if the actual work has been done. If there's a need to increase it, we'll discuss that. At this time, we don't see the need for that.
Okay. But at the time when that's the part, and then they will then, we would make that recommendation to them?
We have our Diversity and Inclusion Officer, Ms. Christina Brooks, has notified the council that we would like the council to continue its current appropriation.
Got you. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm good.
Thank you. We'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of 1941, please come to the podium. State your name and address.
Sandra Brown, 222 East Membah Street, City of South Bend. I'm a human rights officer for the city of South Bend, and like I said earlier today, is that I appreciate your blessing, oneness, passiveness. Friends in time, they'll see that this is a good agreement. We have been willing to work in the county for a long time, finally we just getting the pieces put together. And I hope this can be a partnership that we can last for a long time. We just gotta put the work in and prove that we're worthy of it. We just gotta put the work in and prove that we're worthy of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing anyone wishing to speak against, please come to the podium. Seeing, turn it back to counsel.
Motion for adoption.
Second. Ms. Kaufman.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Teshbette.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fordy.
Aye.
Councilmember Furlough.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaufman, 1942, please.
1942. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, adopting the St. Joseph County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes. Community Investment Met may send this forward favorably. I'd like to make a motion to accept the substitute, please.
Hold on a minute. We're still on House of Republicans.
He met.
Sorry.
He was coming. Gave us a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. For Mr. Furlough, we're on 1942. So, is there a presenter for 1942?
Evening, counsel. Here at Corvath, with offices on 13th floor of this building. In front of you today is a resolution that we're asking the council to approve, adopting the multi-hazard mitigation plan for St. Joe County. This plan is a guide for the assessment of hazards, vulnerabilities, and risks, and what it does is it aids, it's a countywide plan that aids local jurisdictions in reviewing these hazards and having mitigation plans to help with them. So, it's got a number of different areas here that basically aimed at preventing, protecting against, responding to, and recovering from disasters in its most simple form. And there are a number of strategies here that allow for potential mitigation of impacts to these natural hazards. So, this plan was developed in 2008, 2010 timeframe, was adopted by the council in 2010, but it requires continued updates and review. And so, this plan was updated and reviewed in 2017. It was adopted by the St. Joe County Council in 2018. It's been approved by the Indiana Department of Homeland Security and FEMA. You'd asked about the public meetings. There was a public meeting at the draft form. They took those comments, reviewed them, incorporated them into the plan, and then after it was approved by Department of Homeland Security and FEMA, there's a follow-up public hearing for additional comments. So, there were two public meetings that happened as part of the plan update. I think I had mentioned in my note that there is a list of other agencies that have been contacted. You also have meeting sign-in sheets there in the background. Apologize for not having a county here, but this plan is, it's important for us to adopt this, and if we don't adopt it, we will not be eligible for certain disaster mitigation funds and grants that are available. And so, as part of our continuing cooperation with St. Joe County, I'm requesting that the council approve this plan. We have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Thank you. We'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of 1942, please come to the podium. Seeing anyone wishing to speak against 1942, please come to the podium. Turn it back to counsel.
Motion for adoption. Second.
Yeah, just a couple of points were made in committee, though, that I think it's important if we do get some follow-up on the storm readiness and emergency exercises, in terms of when those are, when they're scheduled, that type of thing. And then, the community, looking at the, I'm sorry, the emergency exercises, and the public readiness component of this plan, if counsel perhaps could receive an update from our county counterparts. And then, I think we asked for some, if there were any significant changes reflected in this updated version. And then, I believe we asked too about, but I might be wrong on this, any dollars allocated currently targeted for mitigation. I don't think I mentioned that at the committee level. So, just some follow-up.
You know, that's a comment. You don't need him to answer it now.
No, I don't need to comment, just at a later date. I think that would be appreciated. My concern is that, you know, we have had significant events, and just counsel being kind of aware of what the overall plan is, is important, and then to make sure that it is as responsive, you know, that it's just, you know, it's good to update these things, but the broader that people are brought into the process, and that there's, you know, the actionable pieces, that should be a part of the planning and the readiness components, particularly on this, I think it would be good for counsel to be brought up to date on that.
We'll follow back up with you. There is a motion and a second on the floor already, so, who made the motion?
Me.
Who made the second?
Gavin.
Ms. Kaufman, would you please do your own thing? Thank you.
Councilmember Teshbette.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fordy.
Aye.
Councilmember Furlough.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. 1943, please. Do really good.
1943. A resolution of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana, encouraging continued and increased public engagement between the public and the redevelopment commission.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes. We'd like to listen, looking forward to this. Send this forward favorably.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to accept the substitute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah, well, that goes with my practice.
Very good. Is there a presenter?
I will start it. Are we to read this in its entirety?
No. No, no, no.
So, just a couple of comments. First...
First your name and address, please.
Yes. Councilmember Joe Broden, South Bend, Indiana, 201 West North Shore.
Thank you.
Just a couple of pieces on this, in terms of how it was put together. I want to thank our attorney, Bob Palmer, and Karen White, and counsel members Karen White and Gavin Furlough for their assistance. And then, of course, the rest of the council for entertaining this change, if you would, over the course of the past couple of years, and hoping that perhaps formalizing this request for this change might bring about some changes. So, in terms of the way it's constructed, we essentially wanted to use the resolution as a way to educate the public on some of the responsibilities and what the redevelopment commission is empowered to do. So, those are the first one through seven statements there after the first whereas. And then, we wanted to talk a little bit about the role of counsel relative to the redevelopment commission in the next areas. And then, routinely, the redevelopment commission and its staff in the Department of Community Investments provides reports to the council and also participates in the budget process. So, there are opportunities where we receive documents, and then those are publicly available as well on the city's website, that I just want to acknowledge that in the resolution. So, we did that. And then, there's, so that is actually the, sort of the middle of the resolution, is the reporting requirements. And that gets very detailed, items A through F, with regard to the tax incremental finance districts. And I think that was important to include, because there, among the public, there's various levels of knowledge about TIPS and how they're utilized, et cetera. So, hopefully, that will clarify that by embedding that portion in the resolution. And then, after that item F, we go into about 12 other short, quick whereas statements, and what I'd like to direct the council to with regard to the substitute are the changes that are here. So, if you look at the first whereas statement after that letter F, we deleted some language, whereas, and it should read now, whereas the redevelopment commission has stated an expectation of having 28.4 million within its control during fiscal year 2019. Just cuts the statement there and adds and. So, some deleted language in that first whereas. If you scroll all the way down, kind of midway into that column, there is a, if you'd like to number them, I think it goes all the way to 12, but in the section, the seventh whereas there, I will read it, because I think this does need to be emphasized in terms of the spirit of this resolution. Whereas, among stated priorities of each, of the common council, the city, and the redevelopment commission, they are transparency, public engagement, and the city's growth. So, just to make sure that that is emphasized, even though we're not reading the entire resolution, that's a very important whereas statement.
Uh huh.
And then, eight, or things continue down to the ninth section whereas, and this is actually being responsive to the feedback that we got at the committee level from Mr. Dan Buckenmeyer. We thank him for his feedback. Council has taken his recommendation, and we have changed, made a change from 5:00 PM or later to 4:00 PM or later. So, that, in our estimation, will get around some of the issues regarding the difficulties for staff or perhaps the petitioners to attend and participate during their workday. So, I think that's a good compromise, and certainly happy to incorporate that and ask council's consideration for that change. So, that's change number two. If you go down to the next whereas statement, we have deleted the word necessary in that section, and if you then tick to the sections one, section two, section three, and section four, I'll quickly go through those changes. They're all very minor and coincide with some of the earlier changes. So, section one, we're suggesting a change in the scheduled meeting time. Oops, sorry. Let me go with the right document here. Section one, there is simply a change of time, so from 9:30 AM to the recommended 4:00 PM, the compromise time, or later. And then, we actually inserted the word "may" provide more citizens of South Bend an opportunity to attend the meetings. And then, we just inserted some additional language there that basically talks about being respectful to the commission, its staff, its volunteers, and petitioners by going with this compromise time, not after the end of the workday here, but at 4:00 PM. And then, the last item is in section two, the commission should adopt rules and procedures by which any person attending such a meeting is able to engage the redevelopment commission per agenda item. And that actually coincides with an earlier portion of the document, just making the suggestion that both the commission members will be served well by public input and perhaps even the petitioners themselves, and of course, staff, by letting our citizens be fully engaged, informed about the agenda, and be able to comment on each agenda item as they're presented to the redevelopment commission. And just as many of our other boards and commissions meet and have an opportunity for the public to do that, that this would be per agenda item, we thought that that was important, you know, rather than being at the top of the meeting as sort of a public comment time, or at the bottom as sort of a privilege of the floor, that we actually would like to see input per agenda item, in a way that you speak in favor, you speak against, and then the petitioners and/or staff, similar to here, would have an opportunity for rebuttal. But then, the merits of the petitioned item would be then the final authority of the commission to determine. So, I think we're staying in our lane as a council. I think we're being respectful to the changes that have been suggested, but we certainly want to formalize the request for the meeting time change, and then a change in the format for the public engagement.
Thank you.
I'll ask my co-sponsors.
Well, I think Councilmember Joe Broden has done an excellent job in summarizing the resolution, as well as the different changes, which should thank not only Councilmember Gavin Furlough, our attorney, Bob Palmer, and also Dan Buckenmeyer from Community Investment. You have the substitute version, because these are some of the comments that he had suggested, and we were able to incorporate those within this particular resolution. The resolution, I believe, is important, because it really clarifies for our public the role of the redevelopment commission, what it does, and our role as council members as well. And again, it is a resolution that encouraged continued communication as well as public engagement. And so, again, I'm very excited to be part of the resolution, and we ask that the council will adopt the resolution as presented.
Furlough, anything to add?
No. Just thank you, Joe, and Karen, and Bob, for their work in being responsive to what they had to say.
So, in closing, if I may.
As long as we don't read this.
This is, it is non-binding, is important to point out, but I think as co-sponsors on this, we hope that it is embraced by the department, by the commission members, both current and future, those being mayoral appointments and council appointments, and the administration as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Davis?
Do you know when we will hear any response back from the administration regarding this, besides the fact that they may sign on, any other notification that they are on agreement, or to this being put in place?
Not, well, I can only speak in terms of that we did have a brief conversation with the mayor, so he is aware that this resolution will be forthcoming.
Okay. Because like with the change, I think this is gonna be, I like the four o'clock, because their area plan starts at 3:30, and other things start at four, so I think that's, transport starts at four o'clock, and so there are other meetings that start around that time, that people are publicly have to do so. I think that was a good move from that standpoint, and I see wisdom in doing that. So, I'm hoping that they will, not only in signature, but respond back to us to say that, you know, they appreciate the spirit, and they will inform with that.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing, we'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of 1943 comes to the podium, please. State your name and address.
My name is Conrad Damian, 718 East Broadway. I wish I had known you were doing this. Somehow or other, you didn't get the word out very well. This is something I have been concerned about for 10 years, and have complained about for that long. So, I'm glad to see that you're dealing with this issue. I fairly regularly attend the redevelopment commission meetings, and I haven't seen the resolution, but I am glad that it is as comprehensive as Ms. Broden suggests. I don't think the community understands what the redevelopment commission does very well, and I'm glad to know that that's in the resolution. I think that, on a personal level, 9:30 works for me, because I'm retired, and so more evening meetings are not particularly appreciated, but certainly, to make these meetings more available to the public is important. And I have been told that as a state law, they couldn't have public input except on the financial and the actual districts that they have public hearings about. So, I'm glad to know that that is obviously not true, since you are requesting that they have public input on each agenda item. That can be very confusing, I think, to the commission as well as to the public, but I think it's really essential. I remember a time when there was a group there to speak against what the commission was planning to do, and were told that they had no right to speak. And so, I think that it's really important that we have that right at all public meetings, and every time that an item which affects people's lives, at that point, it was about tearing down houses, but those things that affect people's lives... tearing down houses, but those things that affect people's lives and affect the spending of tax money is very, very important to have public input. So I'm eager to read the resolution, and I'm here to support that you all have gotten on board with the idea that they need to be more transparent and more eager to hear public input on the issues facing the commission. So I believe, without having read the resolution, but I support the resolution.
Yeah. Thank you. Next name and address.
Jason Bedicki-Critslo, 3822 Forest Street. So I did take the time to read the resolution this weekend, and I did find it to be thoroughly comprehensive and very well put together, so I can't wait to kind of read some of the amendments and changes. I appreciate the fact that as this process went on, the administration, at least in terms of Community Investment, seemed willing to make some changes into the times of that meeting to move it to at least 4:00 PM. You know, kind of a compromise between, between I, you know, what the council was asking for and what works for them. So hopefully that means that they will be open to actually moving those meetings to a time when more people can attend, not just kind of be moving the time in the bill and then not end up actually moving the meeting times. Because I think, again, when you're talking $30 million of taxpayer money, you know, that needs to be done at a time when more people can see what's going on, and as was pointed out just before, we have an input into what's being done with those $30 million of taxpayer dollars. And I think sometimes the Redevelopment Commission and Community Investment have gotten away from understanding that, that they're not their dollars, that they're our taxpayer dollars, and we should have an input in that. So I really do support this. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against? Back to council.
One more comment before we go. In the afternoon, there was comments about in past, well, that sometimes when they switched it, the attendance did not increase, but again, like has been mentioned, I think you just can't just say, well, if a meeting's at four and we have the same 20 people that show up, there's no need to go ahead and do this, let's switch it back to nine o'clock again. I think there really has to be effort made to encourage people, let them know what's going on. And the fact is, if we have a meeting that's this full or packed or half and half, we don't change council meetings just because of that. I don't say, well, only 15 people showed up, we want to have a council meeting today at 11 o'clock in the morning. You know, we still have to make it accessible to the people as best we can. And I think what's your recommendation too, I think we need to continue to always make sure as many of our meetings can be televised or put online as soon as can. I think that's all. The more people can see whether there's on their phones or whether they're on their computers and they get access to that, I think this is better for everybody. So I'm just hoping that if a meeting occurs and not that many people show up, there's just not a push to go back.
Thank you. Dr. Davis?
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on, we got two more comments. Ms. White, I mean, Ms. Roden, did you forget something?
Yes. Admittedly. But not really. This resolution really, I hope the language is such and its intent to educate helps, but I want to make sure that one of these statements is actually captured in our minutes tonight in our discussion. I think all of us, you know, wherever you come down on this issue, is, we all want to acknowledge that the Redevelopment Commission has played a vital role in the development of our city. And these proposed changes, the meeting time that we're recommending, and the input per agenda item, we don't, at least as authors of this, we don't anticipate that that will in any way inhibit the role or the function of the Redevelopment Commission. To the contrary, we think that it would improve it.
Thank you. Mr. Roden?
Yeah. I don't mean to be contentious or contrary, but I'm going to vote against this resolution. It's important to state, I think, not because I'm not for open government or transparency, which is a word that I think is overused. People ought to know what their appointed boards and commissions are doing. We're all for that, including me. Changing the time from whatever it is to four o'clock isn't going to really do a whole lot, in my mind. If it does, in terms of participation, if it does, I'll be pleasantly surprised. I think, and as I said in the note I sent to everybody and earlier in the committee meeting, I'm the last one probably on this board to speak knowingly about technology, but technology is there to open these meetings to the public in a much larger way than changing the time of the meeting. We do it here. We've got cameras. This is, these meetings are live streamed, I believe, and you can watch them later. I think because there are important issues that affect people every day, whether it's the park board, or the Board of Public Works, or the Board of Safety, or anything like that, Board of Public Works, more money goes through there than anywhere. I think that, you know, we ought to at least investigate the opportunity that technology provides in this day that wasn't there when, years ago, when this first started being talked about, to open the, you know, the meetings to public participation and content. And so I think it's not a vote in opposition to open government, it's a vote, my vote against this is a vote against what I think is a missed opportunity. I wish we would, I'm glad it's all coming to a head, but I wish we would slow down and sit down with the administration and Community Investment and say, how can we really do this better? How can we engage the public? How can we inform the public? And I just think that there's a better way to do it. It's a missed opportunity. There are costs involved with doing this, they might be incidental, but there are costs in doing what I'm suggesting as well. Maybe the city needs a meeting room studio or something like that with fixed things that, you know, that can live stream and broadcast this for later viewing. There's more and more, people are recording and watching things later. I do it, I do it with the news, I do it with just about everything, from turn of classic movies to anything else. It's just recorded at home and you watch it when you're able. And I think that could be said for public meetings, too. So anyway, and I said earlier that we don't want to move all these meetings to, all the boards and commissions to later in the day because we might as well put the whole city staff on the second shift then. And anyway, in sum, that's why I'm going to vote against this.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adopt the substitute. Second. Ms. Kaufman.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Roden.
Aye.
Councilmember Furlough.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Roden.
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Thank you. First readings, please. Ms. Kaufman, would you please read 1619?
Mr. Scott, would you please, you and the council, I ask permission for the covered argument to retire.
You may.
Tonight?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good night.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us. Thank you for the resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Kaufman, 1619, please.
1619. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for budget transfers from various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year 2019.
I move that this be sent to the Personnel and Finance Committee and heard for second and third reading on June 24th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 1719, please.
1719. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations in 2019 of $85,857 from General Fund 101, $657,159 from Parks and Recreation Fund 201, $28,150 from Gift Donation Request Fund 217, $97,077 from Hall of Fame Debt Service Fund 313, $321,777 from 2018 Fire Station Number Nine Bond Debt Service Fund 350, $178,504 from County Offense Income Tax Fund 404, $3,300,000 from the 2018 Zuman Capital Fund 453, and $70,000 from Smart Streets Fund Capital Fund 753.
I move that this be also sent to Personnel and Finance for our June 24th meeting for second and third hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 1819, Ms. Kaufman.
1819. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in 2019 of $960,000 from EMS Capital Fund 287, $177,475 from Century Center Operating Fund 670, and $63,000 from Century Center Capital Fund 671.
I move that this also be sent to Personnel and Finance for our June 34th meeting for second and third hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Any unfinished business?
You, now the crystals are still coming on?
Uh, yeah, we're looking at the 24th for the update.
Twenty, okay. And the other?
And also South Shore.
South Shore, cool.
Um, I don't have a confirmed date on South Shore, though.
No problem. I have a good date.
I knew you were going to ask for that. Any other unfinished? I don't know if it's unfinished, you were going to make a mention.
Karen's announcement for her, oh, sorry.
No, I'm joking. Any unfinished? No. All right, we'll go to new business. June 20, or June 12th at 5:00 PM, Karen White, Chair of the Personnel and Finance Committee, will have a open to the public meeting with the city comptroller discussing debt. It will be a review of the debt. This is the first in a series of meetings that will revolve around the budget, so there will be, the announcement probably is already out, right? So June 12th, 5:00 PM, probably either in the small room, the informal room at 5:00 PM. Any others?
Related to that, I think there were, there's already two presentations, correct, that are online for previous meetings and special topics.
Right on.
Are those found just under Health and, I'm sorry, under Personnel and Finance? Or is it? Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
I'm working on a resolution, hopefully be ready for two weeks regarding what we can do to help stimulate some more discussion regarding what's going to happen with the homeless, with the library making changes. And in light of our last recent tornado warnings, was brought to my attention that many people who are homeless did not have a place to go, and so I'm just going to do a resolution regarding that. If you have any comments, or if you see any thoughts on that, if you can please send me something so we can make sure that we're included on that.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move to privilege of the floor. This is your opportunity to talk to the council. You have three minutes, anything? You can only bring up things that were not on the agenda tonight. It's more difficult to say it, isn't it? You can't discuss the agenda tonight, so please state your name and address, and Gavin Furlough will give you a warning before your three minutes is up. Ready, go.
Jason Bedicki-Critslo, 3822 West Ford Street, South Bend, Indiana. Back in December, I brought up the idea very briefly of doing a formula business ordinance for the city of South Bend, and I kind of sent you guys just a brief email, kind of overviewing what that would be like. Since then, I got a little busy with some other endeavors, however, since then, I now have some free time on my hands and have much more time to look into this. So I have some more information to email you guys about this. The one thing I did find really interesting is only one of them has been successfully challenged in federal court, and that was primarily due to the fact that they limited the size of, any business to be, and they deemed it to be protective of one particular business in that case. Otherwise, these are fairly routinely upheld through the federal, the local and federal appeals courts. So I'm kind of going to go into a brief overview of what the most basic ones look like to give you an idea of what these are. So hopefully we can get some momentum on these, particularly in light of even more business corridors going into tip districts, which means we'll be putting millions of more dollars into these business corridors. We need to make sure we protect them and make sure that they give us the kind of business return we're looking for. So most of them will start with very much a standard, basic definition of what it is a formula business. And it'll tell you, you know, it's basically any business that has two or more of the following: a standardized name, standardized arrays of services or merchandise, standardized employee uniforms, standardized decor, standardized facade decor, standardized signage, standardized color scheme, standardized trademark or service, or any other similar features which cause it to be substantially identical to 10 or more businesses in the United States. Some go as low as five, but I feel like 10 is probably a better number than five. Five gets to be pretty arbitrarily low. They also live, most of them have some pretty routine possible exemptions. Most of those tend to be grocery stores because a lot of times they're targeting dollar stores and their negative impact on grocery stores in what would otherwise be considered food deserts. You know, financial institutions are routinely exempted from them. Again, most of the time, these are in key economic corridors. You want, you know, financial institutions there where people can do business. Hotels and motels, food service locations are routinely exempted as well. You know, for South Bend, I thought of just a list of areas that we could possibly use to protect this, because some cities go, they're whole cities, I feel like that's kind of pretty broad with the way we have certain economic areas set up to kind of attract that big box retail and things of that nature.
And you have 30 seconds.
Some of these would be Western Avenue, Lincoln Way West, Michigan and Main, the CBD, Indiana Avenue Corridor, Main Street in Michigan, Mishawaka Avenue, and Portage Avenue. And also, they tend to have grandfather rules that protect existing businesses, you can't chase out an existing business, but then those grandfather exemptions are eliminated the minute that you sell that business or close it. So say you have a Family Dollar on Western Avenue, it closes, guess what? You can't put another Dollar General in there, or Dollar Tree who owns Family Dollar sells it to another company, then they lose your grandfather as well. Kind of take that away.
Cool. Thank you. Next name and address.
Samuel Brown, 22 Theresa Barre Street, City of South Bend. I want to speak on the program that we got to charge Black Center Sunday from 3:00 to 5:00, and Mother Take Action Against Violence. Beautiful program. You know, I left there a lot of tears to see the slideshow of people that have lost their life to gun violence. And I'm really proud of all these groups coming together, and that point, as you've been mentioning, the city aware of what's happening in our city. And it's what it's going to take, it's going to take a city effort to try to slow and stop the useless killing. My granddaughter, Elenia, she's a South Bend, Notre Dame, that don't really matter, she's a citizen. She was on her way over to our house over by Memorial Hospital, she come down Walnut, the intersection of Fosse Knott and Walnut. A young man came through, he stopped about four times, and Elenia was screaming and hollering. He stopped. She went through, and he went back to shooting at the house and the car. I thank the young man for letting my granddaughter live. And now we, a family trying to put a route that these kids, tire drives, enemy drives, which way to go is a safe route. There isn't a safe route. I mean, it can happen anywhere. I mean, it can happen anywhere. So we just got to keep our work up as a city and try to stamp this out. It's happened all over the United States, and it's just South Bend. But I just thank God that one of the families that didn't have a tragedy, and the young man stopped and let it go through, and then he went back to shooting. And I thank God for that. But we still got to keep working on it, trying to stop this scissory shooting. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
I'm Graham. How are you?
Next name and address.
Nay. Rod. Goodchild. Better known as Rocket Rod in the running world. If you could just pass that to each one so they could see that. He'll be giving you three items. One is a sample of what?
I guess.
Oh, 837 South 24th Street, South Bend, Indiana, 4665. Goodchild. My father is Robert Goodchild. Nipco. 34 years, and some of you might have learned from when you looked at the specs, what's the third largest budget item in every school program in South Bend? It's exactly right, Nipco. And he ran Nipco for 34 years. The only one that came out of, and had a nominee Indian reservation with no degree was a first lieutenant. That is, there's nothing else out there like it. And it makes me proud because he had a son, and I had the same genetics as my mom and my dad. My dad was a wrestler, varsity, and my mom was a free sport captain at New Tri-Blair when, when I came to South Bend with the war, got married, and sure I am. We had the number one run in all of Michiana, one of the top 10 in the entire Midwest, a great 21 year. Who's family? When you look at the other one, you say, what was Rinky? The only state champion we ever had for South Bend. How bad did I beat him? By a minute and a half. That's when he just won the state. I never had a problem in the same Mid-American Conference, we were the number one for Western Michigan, we had the top team, back-to-back championships, and yet Rinky never even made it with Miami to Ohio. That's your number one state champion from the city of South Bend, I never lost to him. I never raced him because I didn't have a chance in my senior year, I was injured. I've come back from a couple operations just recently, my quest to run the sub-four-minute mile, you can see there, that's when I won the plaque, proud, a year down at Knoxville, Tennessee. When you look at it, it's very simple. We've done seven years of the grape stomp, you know, spirit animals, rather, and when I was in, 2015, I thanked everybody for the support that you gave me. As I was a child, I said I went to Disneyland, I saw the first time, captured my imagination, all these marvelous tarvets, Mickey Mouse and Minnie Mouse.
You have 30 seconds, right.
And anyways, that was family, that was your imagination, that's what captured in the two books, Goodchild and his quest to go so far, keep his quest to go to family, and how much influence they had on him with the family talks, with all the information from Notre Dame, captured his life. They're both identical. One was an athlete, wrote scholar, and the other one was a running scholar, just happened to go to Western Michigan, not to Oxford. Thank you also very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Smoking torch.
And yes, we got the 11 stones, by the way.
Thank you.
They're approved, and they'll be in before the 3rd Saturday of July, April 30. So you're all welcome.
Get one out.
All will be there as we commemorate the 11 stones that give the messages for the 11.
Thank you, Mr. Goodchild. Thank you. Smoking torch, John.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good night, everybody. I see some of my slides are still like a note. Conrad. Conrad.
You say that. You can start to scream.